I can hear you, can you hear me? Awesome. Good evening.
There it is folks, new technology. Good evening. I'd like to bring the call to order. Bowling Green Town Council Work Session, Thursday, March 25th, 2021. And we do have a call. Jeff Vought is on Zoom. And we're here to conduct some old business on job descriptions. Yeah, we have Melissa, sorry.
The proposal we have in front of you is showing our current structure, comparing it to the proposed structure, which would have a Director of Community and Economic Development. And that it would go from Economic Development Coordinator to Director of Community and Economic Development, and it would broaden the scope of duties?
We can't hear you on this.
I don't believe this mic is connected to those. So your feed is coming off of those speakers. Can you hear?
It's a little loud, Melissa.
Okay, I'll try to speak up, is that about? Okay. The purpose of the work session is for council to discuss if they'd like to move forward with this proposal, if they'd like to make changes to this proposal, or if they have other ideas. So I'd really like to leave the conversation up to council and I can answer questions. Everything that I have put together is in writing. And I'd like council to lead the work session and I'll help with answers.
With that, one thing we need to understand, we're not here to discuss personnel, names, or anything of that sort. To do that, that'd be in closed sessions. So we're here to talk about the job descriptions and town managers made out. The other thing I have a concern with, and I have not got an answer yet, was hoping to get it tonight, but Andrea is out, she is not able to attend or even be near the phone right now. But my question is, what is town council's role as far as job descriptions? When we hire a town manager to do the job for us? I just, I'm just trying to figure out what is town council's role? You know, do we decide these, do we not decide these, it's up to town manager? You know, so, you know, I was hoping to get an answer, I had emailed Andrea a couple days ago, so, and I haven't got anything back from her, and I asked Melissa. But before we get too involved in it, I think we ought to think about that. I mean, discussing it might be one thing, but I know town council deals with pay, pays bill, we could all, that's deal with budget. You know, so I know we do that. But when it comes down to actually assigning duties to our employees, I'm just not sure how that is having a role. But y'all can take it from there, I'll sit back. I'll try to keep it peaceful.
Okay, so I kind of feel like I need to start, I told Melissa that, you know, I've been on the Personnel Committee for probably, since I, I think that was my assignment, that I signed at my council, so probably this is my third year. And I feel like it's important for, because I know we have some new folks, and for those of you guys even who maybe have been on council, but don't really kind of, because we've been thrown, I know there's, we've seen a lot of scenarios here, that makes it confusing. And I'm gonna have to just do this long talkings right now. So anyway, I asked Melissa, so I thought it'd be good to start a little bit with where we've been. And I'll just start with telling you guys, Melissa and I met this morning, because I wanted to make sure that I'm accurate with what I'm telling you guys. And in 2015, and I guess that's when Reese came on board. To give you an example of where we've come, we had someone in public works, it was, Melissa, what was the job title that he had?
Superintendent of Public Works, it was offered to someone.
Yeah, so we were trying to find that position, and again, this is 2015, six years ago.
Six, it was 2016, right?
Twenty sixteen, yeah.
When Reese took on.
And.
I apologize. It's 2015, it was before Reese was here.
Yeah, okay, that's right, because Reese laid the foundation for, that was one of the things he saw when he came here, was the infrastructure was broken, we didn't have one. And of course, we all know the water treatment plant was a hot mess, so, anyway, they were looking for someone to do that, and that position, and they were gonna offer them $15 an hour. So, and there was basically, it was an exempt, right?
It was an exempt position, so that person would not have been paid over time, and they would have expected that take on all the duties of running water, sewer, and public works.
And that's just one example, there were basically no job descriptions, even what the sounds were gonna look like, so they were kind of flying by the seat of their pants. So then, when Reese comes on board, 2016, 2017, they looked at, they had work sessions, and he came up with, after there was a study done by the, you guys probably saw this, the external compensation study plan, he used that material, and I know, because I said in committee meetings with Reese, and this was one of his strengths, he was very good at building infrastructure. And we had, and Mark, you remember this too, we had several discussions about, we want to retain our staff, because we don't, so we need to get first the hot prescriptions in place, we need to get salaries and all that. And he took this study, and he also looked abroad at it, what other people in here like how they were making. And that's which, one of the, one of the things that you're seeing here, which basically brings us to the 2019, where we ended up. So they, they had a basic revision or a basic layout in 2017 of what a proposal were, I guess council accepted that, and then in 2019, is where we are currently with what we all, most of us here tonight voted on.
And that would be page six of your packet, where it says current pay ranges by department and position? That's what.
Yes, so if you look at that, I think that'll bring you pretty much up to date with why we're looking at that particular graph, and or that layout of, or that scenario, or what our salaries are, and if you look at the current ranges, if you want to be clear about what everybody's making, that was actually adopted, 6/6/2019. And, and that was, you know, we, we looked at, in the last six months, eight months, different stuff, we had a meeting about six months, it feels like six months ago, was it six months ago?
November, I believe, when we started this?
Yeah. And we were, we were looking, we were concerned at that point, just at the salary ranges, because we just, we were still, and we're still a bit panicky, and I, I wanted you guys to see where, we have come a long way in laying a foundation and giving people, I think, good salaries, so, and I think the question tonight that I see, the silverback is, is are we gonna do the, the position that's underneath on Melissa, you know, as a deputy town manager, or are we gonna expand our economic development position that, that can encompass more for what Melissa can handle, or what, what helps her the most? So, that's my little, I don't know, I probably don't do best to explain that, but, does that help you, Melissa? Good to hear you, Melissa. Or what questions do you have?
I, yeah. So, if we were to place a new position into the admin structure, would the town charter need to be updated, because it did not specify those positions that we are coming to have right now, has a town manager, town clerk, town treasurer, there's a police department, so, would it be, I guess at the same time, would it need to update the town charter?
No, this wouldn't be, those positions, we have to have appointed by council. Any additions, they don't have to be in the charter, it's just the charter saying we have to have those appointed. Like you'll notice, deputy, or patrolman is not in there, and ways for our operator is not in there. And in fact, Economic Development Coordinator is not in there.
If you'll notice, Melissa had a, I guess the current position of the Economic Development Coordinator, and then went to a proposed one, which is this role of that position. After reviewing all the other positions, they all look pretty close to what even Andrea had come up with, so it's just a few look like different language, you know, just words, for the most part, and verbiage there, here and there, but I think that is the biggest question, I mean, that I think we've heard back and forth, that the concern is around that position. When I was talking with Melissa this morning, the one thing that I felt that may need a little attention to was, and again, Melissa oversees all of this, I do feel like there's no doubt that is her position, so everybody does, answers for her, but my only suggestion was that whoever has this role, I know the trend is a lot of teller work, but I do feel like we are a small town, and because this position is, position itself is so new, I feel like it would be better for that person to at least have so many hours that they are in bowling right now, that was my only, that was under job location and positions, whether it be eight hours a week, but I think we do need to be specific to that, so this person, whoever they are, which, you know, we know right now, who that could be, but even in the future, right, like, so this is a, you know, a pretty big responsibility.
I concur with that, Deborah, I'd like to add, that whoever has that position, and since we have a dedicated office, that there needs to be some type of hours of operation on there. I just feel like that office should be manned, I mean, is that anything we need in there?
I got another question, I guess, so, looking at the current organizational chart that we have, do we currently have anyone that's filling clerk treasurer role?
So I currently am still the clerk treasurer as appointed by council. That's why this is so important, is because I need to not be the clerk treasurer and the town manager, it's not best practice for me to have all the financial responsibility.
Correct, I do agree with that.
But you do have someone, so what would the new position that look like, Melissa's speaking today?
The new position, or, the new layout, so we went from, several years ago, operating with three admin staff, we had a town manager, a town clerk, and a town treasurer, you know, I don't know if that was 10 years ago, several years ago. Seven years ago, we added events coordinator as a contract employee, so we had three full-time staff plus a contract employee. In 2015, the clerk and the treasurer got combined to do the clerk slash treasurer position. And then we had an admin assistant, a clerk slash treasurer, a town manager, and a contract employee, the events coordinator. Move forward to, I think, 2018, we took on the events coordinator, I'm sorry, we added a fourth admin staff in the office, and that was the deputy clerk slash treasurer. So at that time, then we had a town manager, a clerk slash treasurer, a deputy clerk slash treasurer, and an admin assistant, and a contract employee, events coordinator. 2019, we brought on the events coordinator as a full-time employee, so then we had five admin. When the last town manager left, I saw as an opportunity to lower our overhead and restructure the duties, pretty much back to where they were four years ago, and say, okay, we have four people here, we can split up the duties, we don't need to fill one of these positions. So that's when I came to council, saying, do you want to keep the current five-person structure, or do you want to go back to a four-person structure? And that is a question I don't think has been really clearly answered yet, things got a little, the process as I had envisioned it, got out of order. I had envisioned that question would have been answered before a town manager would have been appointed, in my mind. So when the, when I was appointed town manager before that question was answered, it made it really confusing when we were looking at these proposals. So I feel like that point needs to be cleared up, make sure everyone's on the same page about do we want four staff members, admin staff members, or do we want five? And if we want five, what position are we hiring for, are we hiring for clerk treasurer? I, I think those are the answers we need to start with.
I guess I was under the impression that's where we started on that Personnel Policy Committee, and then just stopped. Because I have now, right here, the option one, option two, that was presented the first time, so, I guess, is where we pick up there on the option one, option two, or are we focusing on job descriptions, or?
I think that if we all choose one option, we're not gonna do job description, is that inclusive, is that, am I right on that?
I feel like if you don't know if you want five staff members or four staff members, that's gonna make a difference. If you want five staff members, we don't need any new job descriptions, we have all the job descriptions we need.
But would save us the most money, Melissa?
Having four staff members.
That's where I'm, that's my vote right there. And that's what you're doing it with, right?
Right.
Yeah, what we're looking at, with work overload, burning people out, you know, how is that with four people? And with that also, I'll just say real quick, I don't see any need for a deputy, because we're a small town, and you need to be the one that makes all the decisions on how the town is run. So if you want to make it something else, then we can call it something else. But I just worry about, are two ladies of you gonna be so strung out, and, you know, can't handle it a year down the road, and then it'd hard fit trying to hire somebody else?
We have been, since August, we have been running the office, we've very, I wouldn't say that anyone's noticed a difference, as far as nothing's been dropped, service has been just the same. Have we been under stress? Yes, this process has been stressful, and it's, it's been a lot of work sessions, it's been a lot of change. If we had something set, and we knew that we had a Director of Community, Economic Development, that could take on some ad hoc projects, some special interests, that would free up the other two in the front, the admin assistant and the deputy clerk treasurer, that would free them up to focus on the daily tasks. Right now, that structure isn't in place, so it's a confusion about, okay, well, this is the Economic Development Coordinator, is it appropriate to ask an Economic Development Coordinator to help with the business license distribution, because that's where we need help right now? So, if we could say, this, we have this extra admin person, and when there is more work that needs to be done, we can evenly distribute it, that would be helpful for us. Right now, are we starting to get burned out? It's been stressful, I won't say it hasn't been.
Concern too, is if somebody has a, got a bit long-term illness, or broken bone, or whatever, you know, and that, that shuts you down too, something you need to think about.
And we do have everyone kind of cross-trained in the office currently, if I'm out, not that the admin assistant and the clerk treasurer can do everything I do, but certainly, they can keep the day-to-day running. And if one of them is out, they know how to do each other's jobs, to an extent, enough to get us through daily, and we don't have to shut the office down.
Well, if we kept the Economic Development or Coordinator at the same where they're at now, what would be our benefit to hiring a, an assistant admin for duty up there to answer the phones and do the bills and all this and that, without having her, without having this individual step in to take care of admin duties?
That would free up the two front office staff to not have to be interrupted when they're doing something like processing accounts payable, or processing accounts receivable, and they could concentrate, and even then possibly be pulled off into like a special project, without trying to handle answering the phone, taking the money as the customers come in. So that is an option, that would add another employee, so we'd be back to five, but we'd be at five different level employees.
Then we wouldn't put so much on the Economic Developer Coordinator. Do you have any numbers or anything, as far as pay, is overall, what the difference would be between if we had five?
I have had that, essentially, what you're gonna see is we would be, depending on which way we go, obviously that makes a huge difference, but we'd be saving off the bat about $60,000 plus whatever the liabilities or payrolls, so, an extra $20,000, so maybe $80,000?
We would be saving if we went with four?
Right, because you're cutting one whole employee and one whole employee's salary and benefits.
But if we go with five, then we would probably be saving what, 20?
Yeah, depending on, are we talking about an admin assistant that's full-time, or that's part-time, and then how much would we pay them, I guess the assumptions, we pay them. Now, we have already in place an admin assistant that's part-time, that makes an hourly wage, versus, we have an admin assistant now, so what we have in place right now is an admin assistant, a deputy clerk treasurer, an Economic Development Coordinator, and a town manager. What we would be saving, if we added the admin assistant in and kept everybody else in place, we wouldn't be saving anything, because that'd be exactly the same.
So now, you really wouldn't be adding a lot of much to us either, if we kept everything the same and added another person in here, and with whatever, now, you proposed pay hikes on the, on the proposed?
The only salary, or the only pay range that would change on the proposed is the director, if we went from Economic Development Coordinator to.
So if you cut that out, then, then you cut that increase out there.
So we're looking at, well, we'd be looking at exactly what our, our current structure was last April. It would be equal, because we'd be right back to five employees, we'd add your administrative assistant, a deputy clerk treasurer, clerk treasurer, an Economic Development Coordinator, and a town manager.
I don't know about y'all, but I'm kind of leaning myself going back to the stance that we have, because, can't be made a good point, if one of them goes out. If one of them goes out sick, that really is going to mess this office up and it's not going to run right at all. I mean, it's really going to be a downplay.
Now, that's a good part of everybody knowing the jobs. And usually in the jobs, I mean, I know I'm old, but the jobs I've had, when people are out, you have somebody there that can do, that is the beauty of these girls knowing the jobs.
Yeah, I agree with that, but when you only got two in the office, one goes out, office can't be run by one person, especially if they go out for two weeks or three weeks. I mean, you never know.
That's why you have computers these days.
I understand that.
Also, the director of community and economic development would be an admin person that could come in and also cross-train. That person could answer phones, that person could do all of these things. That person doesn't have to stay at that dedicated office. If someone were out and we didn't have to merge them, certainly that person could come in and know enough to, you know, help us through the day, answer phones, take payments at the register.
Right.
I think it's hard to predict what could happen. But I feel like we have a good proposal here. You guys, like I said, I do, I want to hear what people's concerns are. I like the proposed called Gold, the Organizational Chart. It looks like to me the only change we're looking at is the director of community economic development adding to that position, which I think is a wise decision, and basically keeping everything in place. And that is the only salary I think there's a question about, and we don't have to raise that. But I think if we go with a structure that's working and we give everyone, which they're already pretty comfortable in that position, but if we make it official, we can always make changes. If they need another admin person later, maybe a couple months later, there's nothing to say that this will not change. Matter of fact, it probably will. Nothing that we can say here tonight can guarantee it's going to work 100% or that it's going to be the way it's going to be for the next five years. Because we know, look how it's changed like six years ago. We went from having nothing to here. So, Emily, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I am in agreement with you on the proposed organizational chart. I'm fine with the director of community and economic development and the increase in the salary, it's a direct position and increase in workload. It is a direct position. I'm fine with all the others, just had a couple of questions on, not even questions, possible changes on the descriptions, but for me, this office has been working with four people since August, end of August. Four, the comment says to burn out and overwork. Those are all items that need to be corrected with tools in time management or how they are working their time, their organizational items. So to say that they've been overworked since August because there's been so many changes is a possibility. To say that that's going to continue, I don't agree with. Or you can say, look, with increase in salaries and we are paying people a good amount of money, which is the national Virginia research I did for the state of Virginia is the average, maybe a team of mine. To say that they've been burned out is somewhat condescending. We have no idea what their strengths and their weaknesses are right now. None of them have had, or I believe I've seen, and that's Melissa's job, to provide performance appraisals and go through the objective goals and to see where their weaknesses and strengths are. The job descriptions are just a, this is what your job is, this is what your evaluation will be based on. Whatever's in the job description, you're going to do. If you happen to do something else to help me help work, by all means, that's what teamwork is for. But I'm all for the four. I was very confused as I sent out my email because I didn't know where we were coming and going and to make changes, et cetera. But I am fine with director of community and economic development. Community planning is totally different from community development. So I would have a problem with any of these job descriptions. Most of them are on target to what Andrea did. The economic development, I just had a couple redundancies I saw, but other than that, and the saving of the town money. As Deborah said, we've grown in this area in six years. I am hoping that the town grows in six years so that we have over, I don't know, 1,500-plus people. In that case, there might be a need for an administrative assistant or a helper for the director of community economic development to work and strategize. But they all know what each other's position entails, which also provides a succession. And I am extremely big when it comes to succession. As Tammy said, God forbid something happens and we are down a person. If these people are trained the way they should be, John Doe loses his critical spot, if they choose to do that. But that is the big thing for me, succession is vital, especially in a small area like this.
I guess, have we looked at any comparison to other towns, what they're doing with staff restructures? And I guess, is there any redundancy for having a director of economic development in Caroline County? Also, who has somebody that's in charge of that for the whole entire county? I guess puts the consensus of everybody on that.
Well, you hit that on the head.
I mean, I'm just asking if we're going to, I just, with the limit, I guess, where our miles within town is, if we're looking at economic development and having somebody as a director of community planning and economic development, the last thing I want to say is that if we're going to place somebody in that position, is it going to be, are they going to be working against each other? Are they going to be doing the same work that Caroline County individuals are doing? I mean, it's just...
I would say they have a, right now, what our economic development coordinator does is make sure that that business that is out there wants to come in town. They don't want to go to Fort Royal, they don't want to go to Carmel Church, and that tax money is coming here. We set up enterprise zones that allows that money to come into certain areas and then be used in other areas. Those, the county just wants people to come into the county. It doesn't matter to them if it's over on the 95 corridor, if it's in Fort Royal, because they're getting the same amount of money whether it's in the town of Bowling Green or outside the town of Bowling Green. The town of Bowling Green gets no money if something goes to Carmel Church. So I think it's in the town's best interest to have someone that's trying to bring something into the town. And as far as redundancy or working against the county, I would say that our economic development coordinator has a great working relationship with the county's economic development staff. And they even, the county's economic development staff will actually send things our way if they feel like it would be better suited in the town.
Yeah, I don't know if you know this, but we had the position, we used to contract that position. And it was a part-time position for, how many years, Melissa, did we have?
I believe it was five years, yeah.
And was it two years ago, council, that we went with?
Yeah, I think so.
With moving that position from part-time to full-time? So I think there was a lot of value that we saw at that time, and I think we still do. And I think what has come to question because of the pandemic and that kind of threw us all off for a big loop of, all right, so, because what are you going to do in the last year with that position? And I think we're looking again at what is it going to look like when this is done? What are events going to look like? And who knows, it may be that we have to expand this even more, I don't know. But right now, I think we're tailoring something, which is another reason why I'm comfortable with not raising the salary, but so much there, and I'm comfortable, because this is basically a new position again, incorporating the events coordinator into adding, we're adding more to that piece. So...
I would agree with you, we're asking who is now the events coordinator, take on some other administrative and I would say kind of ad hoc projects.
So, Melissa, question. So this position, director of community and economic development, is not a new position because it's combining economic development with community development. So that would be a role change, not a new position?
Yes, if you're looking at the chart on page 25, that would fall into a role change. Essentially, we're replacing the job description that is currently in place with a more broad, more encompassing job description, and that would be a role change.
Right, so according to that, there's an increase for minimum of higher pay rate?
Right.
Which would be the minimum here?
Yes. And that would be non-competitive, which I think is important to note too, because before we've had this question of, well, do we, it's a new job, do we need to put it out for advertisement?
Right.
But it clearly states it's non-competitive, so that would mean we don't have to advertise.
Does Fort Royal have any other person?
I don't believe so. I don't believe they have an economic development company of their own or a...
A good part of the town.
Yeah, they're all in town.
They are incorporating town as well, so they do have like their own business license. I don't believe they have their own real estate or personal property tax. I'm not positive about that. And then they do have their own water system, so, and they have some staff.
I mean, I disagree, I just make my two cents. Sure, we have technology, but it still takes people to put it in, still takes people to greet people, still takes people to process paperwork, whatever. So, you know, you go down one, I'm sorry, the office is going to go down. Let's say you were in the midst of a fall festival. The coordinator was swamped with all that. If you can't handle that, then you wanted to come in here. Then all of a sudden, you got to fill in, your job gets behind. You know, I know cross-training is one thing, and I agree with that, okay? And I wish I had a crystal ball that I could tell you what's going to happen, and I can't.
Why do you assume that they can't handle it?
I'm not assuming they can't. I'm assuming it's going to be very difficult and, well, I tell you what, they have a lot of work to do, and we're talking about even going to once a month building on water when the new meters get in. That's even more work than it should have been every two months, now it's every month. So you got to get it out, people coming in to pan, and that's much the same thing.
So I would think all of that is being streamlined. I mean, I guess I'm being naive to think in the 21st century here. It's, this is the way of the future. It is telecommuting. That is what is going to happen. And I'm not saying they shouldn't be in an office. Absolutely, I agree, they need to be in that office. But for a problem or a challenge that happens, a death in the family or something like that, there's no reason they can't work from home or work from their car or work from, you know, it's just like, you know, Arthur was on the road the other night and called in. So all of these are variables that still give you creating a workload. You're still doing what you can. I think to say that they can't handle it, that for me, that's condescending, sorry.
Well, we did have a good example of that in Reese's Land. I mean, the place was...
Melissa's is probably their best job.
Yeah, so that's a good example of what happens.
Exactly.
But at the same time, we're not corporate government. What the old saying is, you do more with less. But you got a lot of people to pull for. When you have a large pool, you can do that. When you have a small pool, it does make it difficult. I'm not saying it's impossible, but it makes it difficult. So if we stayed at the same structure, you know, we don't lose anything. But anyhow, I don't have a vote in this. I'm just giving my opinion, and I'm not going to say anymore about it until we get ready to decide what we're going to do, what we're going to get done.
Jean, do you have any concerns tonight? Has it been Dr. Us, Jean, or you?
I... I like it. To go with the four, like we've got.
What about you, Jean?
Yeah, just forgetting a couple things. I'm just trying to figure out who does what. I'm reading some of the best I can read now. But the first two things on the proposed for the director position, that you proposed a foot function. And I gave you my address, but right now, it says, sir, is the main point contact for public relations matter. Who is the main point contact right now? Is that Jean, Melissa?
It is me, I usually like, for an example, when we were about to do the water shut-offs and we had a phone call from a reporter with the Freelance Star, I did handle that. When we got the new police car from the sheriff's office, the press release was written by the economic, sorry.
There we go. There we go, a reading touch.
The press release was written by the economic development coordinator. When you see a press release that goes out, it's written by the economic development coordinator. She's, our current economic development coordinator is writing, she can knock out a press release really quickly. I think it's important that we have a consistent public image, a branding, so if we have it go through one person. It's not to say that one person would be out there making the calls of what needs to be said, but we would come together, speak with council, the mayor, myself, whoever needs to be involved in whatever this public relations matter is, and that person would be the point of contact to get that information out to the public, be it on our website, Facebook, whatever the media.
So Melissa, the mayor she is, when there's a press release about to be made, who's making that now?
So currently, what happens is usually the mayor will contact me or I'll contact the mayor, we'll decide that a press release needs to be put out, contact the economic development coordinator. She'll put it together, send it to both of us, and if we're both good with it, then it'll be put out to the media.
So what you're saying is, does she is actually doing it at home now?
Correct.
So, and she's actually, so that's something she's already doing?
She is already doing it, but it's not in her current job, so...
Okay.
Do anybody else have anything they want to add or discuss?
I think the salary is a little bit too high to go to, given the minimum wage. One being because she doesn't, they don't have any employees, direct employees other than like the regular other directors.
I think that's a non-issue. The, if you look at the clerk-town treasurer description, in there, they actually have a, serves as a helper for the economic development. So as I mentioned before, if this person chooses to move, make a lateral move as she progresses or he progresses down the road, to make a lateral move to economic development, the salary range is the same, there's no change. But you want to make sure that maneuvering is capable of happening. If you don't, then you're going to want to pay a lot of money.
I guess I'd like to see some research with other towns that are in comparison with size and their personnel structure. I guess from what I've gathered here, towns that are in comparison with Bowling Green do not even have an EDA department. that are in comparison with size and their personnel structure. I guess, from what I've gathered here, towns that are in comparison with Bowling Green do not even have an EDA department.
Or if you want to redigrate?
Does everybody know what the current economic development coordinator, which will move into the Director of Community and Economic Development, person makes? Can you tell that on your current? Because I know it's... We see a lot of numbers before, so I want to make sure everybody looks at... If you look at...
What did Gary Wilson make?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
I think he made a lot more than that.
He makes significantly more, I'm certain, of economic development.
If you go to the page, it says current pay rate is by department position. And again, this was all adopted in 2019. We've studied this for years. But if you look, this is where we are currently. The only position that... So we have a town manager who is making seventy-eight, which we just verified not long ago. And we, I think, did raise that position a little bit. One more second.
That was... This...
Seventy-eight, is that...
Seventy-eight is the first time that scale you see in front of you. It's the first time there's ever been a set scale. Because the town manager, I think, was adopted in 2019.
Is that what you're... That is what you're making now, right?
Yes.
Which is the minimum, okay. The economic development coordinator is currently making fifty. It's fifty, I think, five hundred, or something. I don't remember that this morning. The police chief is making sixty-one, two thirty-five. The clerk treasurer is not billed. The deputy clerk treasurer is making forty-three, five point eight. The administrative assistant is making thirty thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars. Director of Public Works is sixty-seven, five. They are the only ones, I think, that had a little bit of... No, I'm sorry. Melissa, is that the one that had a little bit of raise recently?
I'm sorry, which one was?
Percent sixty-seven, five. Director of Public Works.
The Director of Public Works, where is he? That's a starting... That was at... In one version that you and I looked at, it was at sixty-four, but the adopter version became sixty-seven. I don't know the reason. I don't recall a conversation around that one happening.
All right. And you can see now, the rest of them are exactly as listed below. So I don't want to see you repeat that, but...
And not every single one of these positions is filled. These are just the positions we have here currently that we can fill. We don't have just many people at the treatment plant at these different levels. We actually have like an operator training and an operator one. So...
So I mean, wouldn't... Just by looking at this, my opinion would be that we need to fill the clerk treasurer position so that there's an eye contact interest that the town manager does not have to keep fulfilling this job. So that's what I would like to see now first.
Yeah. Well, that's on this plan here, the proposed, and that is part of the plan here.
Yeah. So once you vote on it, then that, I don't like, it goes into place.
So I would ask that we... That you guys come to a consensus tonight and not actually vote until next week at the council. I would prefer that.
All right. All right. And we need a... We need this consensus on what we're gonna be looking at next week. Not that you can't change them, huh?
I want to... Last little question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you say fill the clerk treasurer, you are meeting with one of the four people that we have, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not hiring anybody else on the proposed. That would only be on the current. So Arthur, what are you... What are you looking at? Current or proposed?
I mean, I think we need to have a town clerk treasurer. But I'll be honest, I'm a little confused with all the paperwork that's been given out over the last, say, three months. And, you know, we had one meeting, like I said, with the policy and personnel committee. And we started on this. And then we've been, I guess, presented two job description changes. So right now, I guess the works has been trying to figure all this out. And that's what I'm trying to grasp right now. So I think it's imperative, the first order of business is to fill the town treasurer position so that the town manager can alleviate some of the duties. I mean, going with four or staying at five, I mean, I... I just, right now, I think we need to focus on getting that position filled first. But that's me.
Jared?
My question is, if you fill it, and I agree, we need to fill that clerk treasurer position, but if you fill that with somebody that's already staffed, so wouldn't that come from the clerk or the deputy clerk position and the administrative assistant position? And if one of those people get it, then we still have a number of vacancies. So eventually, you end up with another person.
That's what I'm...
Adding on.
Well, they want to... They want a role change. You know, they just want to... I'll say, Tracy, let's say, we want you to now change your role over to this. And this is your new role, your new job description, and boom. And then Judy would be the same way. So now, all they've done is taken these two, changed the name on them, and just put them, you know, put people in. So, you know, everything stays the same. That's all we're doing.
But everybody gets different responsibilities. It's like...
It changes.
Joe Alsas getting more work, so it's...
Right.
Yeah, that's what you're doing.
Yes. You're increasing their responsibilities, which really, the two girls in the office, I don't see how you can put any more on them because they're already doing it. Tracy's already doing bookkeeping entries and all that. Melissa's been doing the accounting part, the overseeing, to make sure everything is correct. All we're gonna be doing then is just putting it all on Tracy. And I think State says we have to have a treasurer appointed, right?
Yes. And that's why it's in the charter. We have to have a clerk and a treasurer.
Right. So that's something that State says we have to have.
Okay. So now, the clerk treasurer's not the town manager. We gotta have a treasurer. But we don't have to have a deputy treasurer? Is that what you're saying? We don't have to fill that?
That's not in the charter. But we would be...
Does he have?
Increasing everyone's responsibilities. We're cutting a person. And it would be my job to make sure all of these duties are properly assigned. So if...
Does he have the check and balance still? Who would be the second check and balance person? You or Judy?
It would go back to how it was. So we have a front end. The way our accounting system works, we have like a front end and data entry. That would be the deputy clerk treasurer. Then after you've entered it, you can write a report. That report goes to the next level up, the clerk treasurer. And that clerk treasurer makes sure everything's good. And they... That clerk treasurer closes the report. At the end of the month, we... I work with the deputy... Or the clerk treasurer and with a CPA. We do have a third CPA who comes in. Not on... She's just a contract employee. She comes in as needed. She checks over to make sure there's no discrepancies and we don't have any problems with our general ledger. And if I need journal entries, she'll help with journal entries. She can help the new deputy... Or the new clerk treasurer with journal entries. And in the end, that CPA is the one that helps us to gather all of our audit information. And then we go to an independent auditor to get a single file audit. So there is several steps of checks and balances. And then when it comes to invoices, we have department heads in truth here saying all their invoices are good. Then it gets a second stamp of approval from the clerk treasurer. And then it gets a third stamp of approval from the town manager. And then it gets a fourth stamp of approval from the mayor and council. So there's steps.
Melissa, and I hear exactly what you're saying, Arthur. And I do hear that, obviously, that we hear a lot about clerk and treasurer we have to have. But answer this question. Am I too soon, which I have been, you already... We have someone who is very familiar with this position and is ready to take it. Isn't that who...
Yes.
We basically have all these jobs answered already. We are just now... What we want to do is make it official.
We need to make it official.
We have someone already who knows how to do this job and is assisting you with that. Is that correct?
Right now, that person's doing the job because of one or other thing.
We're just seeing it official. So we, you know, and that's where we're lacking. We have all been analyzing this and fretting over it for, what, two months? And so has our staff. They were all feeling very like, do you want me here or not? I'm doing the best I can. And I feel like we have something that works so well. And I don't know about you, I've got other things too, that I don't want to hold you to. So that's... I've had this said by piece. I feel like we're overanalyzing this. We're overthinking this. And I do trust, we have put Melissa in a position, that she can handle this. She can handle any PR stuff. She knows to come to us if we need to make changes, something isn't working. We just gotta make it official. It's been working for us.
Melissa, who balances the checkbook?
Currently, I'm balancing the checkbook. I haven't had the opportunity to read that on to the deputy clerk treasurer. And honestly, I didn't feel like it was fair because just to keep piling things on the other staff. But once everything's set, that would be on the clerk treasurer's job. And then our CPA does come in and look that over. And then it goes to audit.
So the deputy clerk writes the checks?
Ultimately, yes. The deputy clerk posts the checks.
I guess, trouble I'm having is that the organizational chart that's current and proposed does not matter. I mean, does not match up to the option one, option two that we were given just sixty days ago. The titles do not match up. And that's what's confusing me.
That's why I sent my email, because I was like, what the? I didn't understand.
I understand, yes. So that's why I'm having some trouble here. It's not adding up.
Would it be... Would we need to have the accountant that we have come in once a month instead of once every other month or something to keep everything on track better if we have to? I mean, that is an option.
That is definitely an option. And to kind of pull the town manager back from some of that financial responsibility that is probably...
That's probably what you need to do. Since we're not gonna hire a treasurer by themselves, we have somebody that can come in on the backside of the month and just make sure that it's correct.
That is a great point, because if you go back three years, probably three years ago, we had a CPA that came in regularly, once a month, and did the journal entries, did the state balance, the bank statement. But when we added an additional... When we added deputy clerk treasurer over the last time of the year, we didn't need that CPA as often because the current clerk treasurer myself was able to just do those things. So you make a great point. We could definitely just bring in the CPA that we already have. That already knows what we're doing once a month on a regular basis.
That would be a way to save on money too, by bringing her instead of hiring somebody else in. Okay. All right. Long as you got somebody checking the folks real good, you know, with being just three, it would be an extra feather in our hat. We have a accountant that gets in every month. And treat that accountant like it's... Like she's a treasurer. She's just been overseeing everything. And we're good with the state with doing the deputy clerk treasurer. Okay. All right. Deborah? Were you looking at four, standard four, like you say? I mean, this is just for next, you know, next week, just a consensus.
Right. My consensus is to go with our proposed organizational chart. Go with that structure. And, yeah, that's nice.
All right. Valerie?
Yes, sir. I am on board with the proposed organizational chart. Does the name change to role change to Director of Community and Economic Development?
Ms. Gaines?
Well, I guess we'll just go with the consensus since my points are irrelevant.
Jeff?
Yeah, I want to see them.
All right. And Gene?
I tend to go with the proposed.
Okay. All right. Well, you got your consensus is going with the proposed. There are nothing changes by Thursday. We should be good with that. And we'll put it on the agenda and we'll do a motion on it.
And then I'll also have on the agenda to have council appoint a clerk treasurer. So we'll have that set.
Okay. All right. That'll be fine. So we can do all that at the same time? Okay. We can just do one motion and then do the other motion and be done with it.
Yes.
Sounds great. Do I hear a motion to adjourn if we've got nothing else to discuss?
I would.
I got the first by Gene.[1784.42]